Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for January fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I'll stall for a minute for you. That's a beautiful night, isn't it? Oh, okay, she's ready. May I have a roll call, please?
Ready. Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Bavir?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Hoffman?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
And I don't see Alderman Widener yet.
Excused this evening.
He's excused. Okay. Did I call everybody? I'm sorry. Alderman Berry, Alderman Ashauer, sorry.
Here.
Excuse me.
Okay, very good, thanks. Please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands on nation, underground, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time we have set aside for citizens' comments. Please, if you want to speak tonight at some point, fill out the form and give it to the clerk so we have a record of who you are and where you live. I have two folks here that have signed up this evening, Sue Fox and Bob Seibert. Both of you, I think, have spoken before, so we'll start with Sue. Would you like to come up,
Thanks. I just wanted to...
Would you give your name and address, please?
Sue Fox, three one four oh five Klein Circle, Warrenville. You know, I'm just concerned about the parking along Torch again. And we've had a couple of snows recently, and I think I emailed the council members with a photograph. On numerous occasions in our neighborhood in Cantera Village, we've had to truck our snow away because there's not even enough green space for us to put our snow. So I'm wondering if you've thought about that issue with, you know, so little green space along Torch Parkway when there is a big snow or multiple small snows, where is that all going to go? And, you know, and then I think I also put in a letter, you know, when our landscaping truck comes, it's a big truck with a trailer and it parks along our pond because it can't block anyone's driveway. So in the event that there, you know, it was a nice day and all the parking spaces along Torch Parkway were taken, or there weren't enough, you know, parking spaces in a row, where would that truck park? I think that these are all issues that, you know, in day-to-day life, things, you know, things that you have to deal with. And I'm just really worried that those townhomes, given visitors and landscapers and snowplows, there's not going to be any place for them to go. And then Mr. Mensker talked about land banking. I know in a lot of the instances, like in commercial instances, they, they had people set aside additional land, and if there was a parking issue in sometime in the future, they could call upon that land to generate more parking. But there isn't any land banking in this project. There's no give at all. And I just, I think it's a great project. I just think that for that amount of money that those people are going to be spending on those townhomes, that they should have a place for all these things to occur. And I don't want it to spill over into our neighborhood and our streets to become lined with cars for the visitors of those people or the landscapers of those people or whatever the spill-off is. Because we, our values are based on how our neighborhood looks now, and that's, you know, my concern. I just feel like if there was one building less and they created a visitor a lot, it could eliminate a lot of these potential issues. And if, you know, if you don't do it now, you can't go back and change it later. That's my concern. So, thanks.
Thank you, Sue. I think it might be appropriate, we'll interrupt citizens' comments to have the presentation tonight by Enterform on the Riverview West development so people know what comments are being made about. So gentlemen, if you'd like to make your presentation at this point, please introduce yourselves and have at it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is John Shease and I am the architect... excuse me, got some throat issues here tonight, and the person in charge of the approvals process. Sitting here is Bill Greve with Guald Hamilton. He's our traffic consultant. Sitting right behind him is Chris Lannert from the Lannert Group. They're the landscape consultants. In the middle there, if you could stand up possibly Igor, Igor Blumen. He is the developer with Enterform Holdings. And last and certainly not least is our civil and environmental Kevin Kenneth with Bollinger Lack. That rounds up our team that we have for consultants. There's additional consultants that are not here, our marketing person and our impact analysis person. But this is our group. We've been at this for a little over a year. We've worked with the Plan Commission and we, we reached a unanimous approval from the county, from the Plan Commission on the twenty-first. And I'd like to walk you through the development, not getting into the details, but hopefully that sets the context both for your vote but also for possibly your questions and the comments from neighbors. A quick review of the process. We had our first Plan Commission on November seventh. Prior to that, we had a few, we had two courtesy reviews, which were very helpful to get to work with your staff, and a lot of feedback came from both staff and council. We have, we had a staff and consultant meeting here to review. Based on that, our development changed, I think substantially. A lot of the entrances and traffic ways were worked out to the satisfaction of all of the city's consultants and to the developer and our consultants. We had a neighbors' meeting on the twenty-eighth. We had a very frank exchange of conversation. Ms. Fox was there, as were a few others, and we found it helpful because frankly, we don't live here, so it was good to get some feedback. As a result of that, we worked again with staff, and one of the big things that came out of that meeting, that eleven-twenty-eight meeting, was parking along Torch Parkway. You'll hear some of the metrics about the parking for the townhomes. The townhomes themselves have a parking ratio of four to one, two interior parking spaces, two exterior, plus one along Torch Parkway. It's not dedicated, but there are sixty spaces along Torch Parkway and sixty townhomes, so that brought the, if you're looking at numbers ratio, a five to one parking ratio between the townhomes and the, the parking. We went on to a second Plan Commission meeting and a third Plan Commission meeting, and here we are tonight presenting this to you for your vote. Here are some of the data. The parcel is almost thirty acres, twenty-nine point four two seven. We are proposing five commercial buildings for a total of thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty square feet. We'll get to the site plan. I'll show you where those are, but this just lays out the metrics. We're proposing a multifamily building with three hundred and sixty-four apartments and townhome, sixty townhomes along Torch Parkway. The parking, which is, has been a topic of discussion from the first time we met with the Plan Commission and with staff, is outlined like this. The parking for the residential, there is a total of seven hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces. You could read your staff report that breaks it down both on a number of units and number of bedrooms. These, these brackets are here just to tell you that the seven twenty-eight number comes as an aggregate number between the number of parking spaces that are inside the building, parking spaces that are outside the building, and parking spaces that are shared between the commercial and the residential. There's two hundred and five parking spaces for the commercial component. This is a big aerial view. This is actually a Google map that we have superimposed the development. You can see our adjacency here to the townhome development where I believe Ms. Fox lives. There was a lot of discussion about this intersection here. We'll get to it a little more. But you could see that we have rearranged the ponds, rearranged meaning we have re-engineered so as to accommodate more green space, more crossover, and some links to the, to the path, to the Riverwalk. Here are the two entrances here. I can always come back to this if there's questions about context. Where is this building in relationship to existing buildings, for example, here, the tall tower here, and where is that in relationship to our, both our retail, our apartment building, and the townhomes along Torch Parkway? So, this is the site plan. I believe you've had an advanced look, but let me walk you through it. So down here is the Ferry, Ferry Road with the intersection here that aligns with the intersection across. This does not have a signal intersection, so we have, Kevin and the engineering firm have worked out a right turn in so that traffic can flow easily through this. And this spine goes all the way here, and it intersects with a reconstructed Torch Parkway. I'm minimizing some of the detail here, but I did want to note that we are connecting Torch Parkway here and reconnecting Torch Parkway here with, at the intersection, and the two are aligned. Other things of note, the commercial spaces are here, and that's the thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty square feet. We are proposing a drive-through facility here and an outlot over here with parking, parking that's shared there, a green space buffer between this element and the multifamily building. This is a four-story building that you may have heard, heard it called a wrap building or a Texas wrap building because the construction type originated in Texas. There is a four-story concrete parking structure right there. The vehicle access to that is here. There's a secondary service entrance here, and all wrapped around it like this are, is a four-story apartment structure. The, the interesting thing about this is that if your apartment is on the second floor, you park on the second floor and you walk across a hallway and you're in your apartment. That solves a lot of problems for a lot of folks who may be living alone, who are concerned about security. That solves that problem. The, the access is restricted to key card, both in vehicular and pedestrian, so it's very attractive for a lot of folks who work and come in at odd hours. Nurses, for one example, both genders prefer that because they, they come and go at different hours. You're not walking across a parking lot. There is additional parking here for the residential building. One of the big changes that came as a result of one of the meeting, the neighbors' meetings, was we originally had parking going all the way up to here. We consolidated it and made the path a little easier. So in terms of parking, there is a one-to-one ratio between the number of parking spaces here and the number of apartments. So if you rent an apartment in the, this building here, you will have a parking space inside. If you wish to have a second car, then that parking is accommodated there. Our client has data because they have a similar building currently under construction. It's not online now, but they have a lot of other suburban-type apartment buildings, and they're comfortable with the parking ratio that we ultimately landed on. They're comfortable, when I say comfortable, their operations folks are saying, "The parking you've provided, we will never reach that limit based on our data of renting apartments in this, in a, in a similar town with rents equivalent to this." The last part are the townhomes. The townhomes are here both with a, in two, in four or six groupings. So you will see that some buildings like here have four parts, four units, and other buildings like this have six, and they vary back and forth like this. We, we got very detailed with staff about the spacings between units, the angles, the setbacks, so that it would, it would be a comfortable, if you wanted to park outside the garage, it would not interfere both with pedestrian path or vehicular path. Another subtlety is this slight curve here. Kevin is here to answer that in a little more detail if you have some questions about why it's actually formed in that manner, but it has to do with traffic safety first, and then the segregation of traffic between the retail space here and the residential uses here. There's others, other subtleties about the width of this drive here. It gets narrow from this point over here, both in functionality to try to slow traffic down, but also to discourage a quick shortcut here. We were very aware, our traffic engineer, Bill Greve, worked out a plan so that we would minimize the shortcut through here to bypass the light here. We were sensitive both for our future residents but also for the neighbors here who may experience a little bit higher traffic from, not this development necessarily, but from cut-through traffic. So that's a lot to say about the site plan. We, the site plan has also been vetted by the police department and the fire department. I think we've addressed the fire department's concern about entry points and access around the building. The building is a fully sprinkled building, but that, that helps in the safety of the building, but also we needed to be aware of the fact that emergency responders may need to access here, here, and at other points. So given that, we submitted some data to the fire department. Somebody is supposed to be keeping track of time, and I think I've got a little bit more time. Let me go through this quickly. This diagram shows the phasing of the development, and the first thing the developer has committed to is to install the roadways and ponds. So everything in gray is phase one. So before any foundation is put, before any building is put, the roads will go in, the work to the ponds, and all of that, and the infrastructure, so water, sewer, all of that goes in before any building goes up. That's the gray phase. The blue phase is the second phase. That is the multifamily building and the related parking. So because the two work hand-in-hand, we needed to construct that as our phase number two. Phase number three is in this lime color here, which are the townhomes. Now remember, the infrastructure's already there, so most of that is, and because they're in groupings of two and four, that makes it easy for the developer to start going vertical with that work there. And our final phase is this green color here, which is the retail and the related parking. So the infrastructure is in, but these buildings and related parking get put in last. This is a rendering by the architect for the multifamily of the entrance. This is the entrance where folks come in. They, if, if visitors are here, they're usually either parked or get dropped off here, and this is the main entrance. One of the things that I'm hoping got through in the staff report is the fact that this building is a Class A residential building with high amenities. So workout center, the, a, it has cafes, all kinds of amenities. They're not coming to me right now, but they, it's not just a mail center. It has package delivery systems. There are meeting rooms. There are small office centers. So a lot of amenities for the building that are inside the building structure. This is a sample of the architecture that we would, we haven't designed it yet, but this is what we were in concept for the retail that is along Ferry. And one of the interesting things about that, if you remember the site plan, the building really has two fronts. It faces north, but it also faces Ferry. And so we will, our pledge was, even though we haven't designed it yet, was not to have a back face onto Ferry. So this, this is what we would anticipate would be along Ferry. After all, it does advertise the, the uses here and has some access points on the back. This is the walking paths. Ron was very deliberate and very emphatic in his advice to us about walking and bike paths. The fact that the original Cantera approval included a lot of this moving through the original site that was approved, but he wanted to be sure that we connected at all the points, moved through the site in a logical path. So for example, here's one connector, another connector, another connector, and they move through the site in a logical path, pattern, and then connect both up to the Riverwalk but also through the site. I think that was, this is something that I'm quite proud of because it took a lot of iterations to get to a point where everyone was comfortable that, that the original intent of the approval was met. This is, as I mentioned, townhome guest parking. Townhomes behave in a, in a very interesting way. I have been designing and developing townhomes for when I had a lot more hair and it was a lot darker, and folks that live in townhomes generally don't have the big blowout parties because of the, how townhomes are set up. They're set up vertically and they just don't host a lot of parties, so therefore they don't tend to draw a lot of guest parking. Now that's an anecdote. I'm not, I, I can't send you to a codebook and tell you exactly, but that, in my experience, that's how it's happened. We have never, in the time that we've all been working together and designing townhomes, ever had a five to one parking ratio for townhomes. That's just beyond our, our design sense. It doesn't, but we have that here, and we have that here, and you could see that it, it moves in front of the townhomes with brakes. It's not continuous. It's not as if we expect the townhomes to have, I mean, to, to have parking bumper to bumper along there. It's not restricted, so that could happen. So we have made a new trail connection here. Kevin, is that correct? You may see more cars clustered around that because it's not restricted. It's not restricted to folks that live here. It could be folks who just want to be close to the trailhead and then use the trail. We talked a lot about this corner here. Ms. Fox and another neighbor were very concerned about traffic here. So one of the things that Bill, our traffic engineer, helped design is a system whereby traffic can move safely here, so there's a center island, if you will, that, that routes traffic so it can move easier here. Parking starts somewhere along here. I, I don't share the concern. I, I hear it. I understand it, but I don't share the concern that folks here are going to migrate and park here. I think our landscape architect is comfortable with the amount of area that we've left for snow plowing. We've left, and also for parking of vehicles, service vehicles, the FedEx truck that comes, the landscape truck that comes. I think we have accommodated that within our site and in a safe and orderly manner. This is a rendering of the townhomes. We worked with, with your staff on, on this quite a bit. The Plan Commission was, pushed us, if you will, on the design of these, and we came up with a, a plan that actually, initially we had basically the same floor plan sixty times. And Plan Commission members pushed back on, on us and said, "Why don't you try to see if you can, within the building envelope," I think that's what they said, "do some ground floor master bedrooms?" Now those are what happens when you provide in a townhome, a ground floor master bedroom. What happens is the market expands. In other words, you can reach a bigger range of folks. When our original marketing plan was done for this, what they said is, "You're going to cap off at sixty. The folks that will live here will cap off at sixty." The, the marketing study told us that because of the number of stairs. Well, when we introduced the ground floor master bedroom, that all of a sudden took that sixty to sixty-five plus. So that allowed us to be more flexible within the market for these to a wider range of folks. This is the engineering plan. I'm going to skip over this because I think your staff has worked really well with, with Kevin on that. Kevin on that. One of the things that, that was striking to me is we kept presenting things in black and white, and some neighbors said, hey, I'm just seeing a lot of white, and I'm seeing a lot of concrete. And so, what we did is, we, we commissioned this drawing. This shows all the green space, everything that is potentially green space. And what we found was that we are actually quite satisfied. We actually provide more green space here than the previous approval with, with the tower and all the parking. That was comforting to us. We kind of intuitively thought that, but having done this and run the square footages, we were, we were very grateful that, that we were, we got to this point. Our landscape plan was another one. We kept showing things in black and white. And Chris's office then rendered this for us. You can see that Chris did not hold back when it came to trees landscaping. There's, this is the overview, but there's a lot more detail, detail for landscaping along the building, landscape between the parking areas. When I saw this, I thought, we've done a good job. We've done a really good, Chris has done a really good job, and the team has to come up with, with this design. For orientation, here's the multifamily, the townhomes here, and the retail here. Just running through these quick highlights. Land use, the update, the new housing types, we are clearly bringing forward, for your approval, a, some, a use that is not necessarily within the Cantera guidelines. We're, we're asking you to consider the new housing types that are both diverse and supportive. We're not doing the same housing type. We even came up with a plan for the townhomes that varies slightly. We believe that that is supportive from, because from the very beginning, one of the, the guiding principles here was to bring a housing type that did not exist in Warrenville. And we knew that the, the folks that had the, the businesses, the engineering practices who were looking to attract a new type of employee needed this type of housing to be here, both along the corridor. So, this would serve nearby, but it also will pick up residents and folks along the entire corridor. The density that we provided here is 70% of the previously approved square footage. So, if you look at the leftover square footage that was left from the previous approval, and you, you have that as a number, and then you add up all the square footage that we are proposing, we're 70% of that number, less square footage. Site design, configuration, we believe we've, I, I'm biased, but I have to tell you, th- this was a clever site that had a lot of things going. You had a lot of things along Ferry. You had torch, you had neighbors, you have a tower, you have a, a pond and, and other restrictions. You've got the wonderful Riverwalk. The fact that we were able to kind of, as a team, move this together, and that, by extension, your staff was pushing us and working with us as a team, I'm really proud, and that's why I'm not hesitant to say that it's creative, attractive, and functional. The parking, the parking's always been a, a point of discussion, but it's more than the, help me with I T E? Thank you. Institute of Traffic Engineers did an independent analysis, and we are, we are more than operationally required with this. So, this is the number, the operative number, 1.27 parking spaces per bedroom. Folks that have no skin in the game, the, the traffic engineers actually say that we are better than, than the, what they recommend as operationally required. Last but not least, what I highlighted, the landscape area. And I know Ron has a, a real fine point to this. This is the way I put it, that six, that at 63.4, we exceed the Cantera landscape requirements that were approved at 47. If you have granular questions about that, I think Ron would, would help there. I'd like to close with compensating benefits. It's sustainable development. It's development that will take Cantera from where it is now to the future. It will be supportive. It supports folks that are already here. It will support neighbors that are coming in. It's the combination of uses. It are collaborative, and they support each other. They will support job growth. The proposed development will complement the character of the community. It won't match it. We're not looking to match, but it, we will complement it. And lastly, we believe that the development will support property values. I believe the investment is somewhere between 90 and $100 million. Over. The last thing I'd like to close with is, who, who are the folks that are going to be moving in here? Our original marketing study from Tracy Cross, and those of you that don't know Tracy Cross as a, a company, they are a market research company that is actually nationwide, but they have a, a real big stake in the Chicago area. They follow trends. They follow trends in all kinds of housing markets. That's, that's all they do, is housing. And what they said to us is, the apartments, the stru, for the apartment component, the strongest lifestyle age categories are 35, 35, folks that are under 35 and 55 to 64 years old, of households of two persons or less, and income with a minimum income of $55,000 per person. They, we may get some non-traditional households such as divorced persons, widows, singles, and single persons living as couples. So, that, that, that catches a broad range of the market, of the housing market. It's been a market that, according, again, to Tracy Cross, has been growing in DuPage County since 2000. I think 55% of the new, newly built residences since 2000 in DuPage County have been apartments. Townhomes, the next component. The strongest lifestyle category are 30 to 40 with some mobile persons, 55 to 60 years old. That was the original. That was before we added the component, with household size of two pers, two or three persons and household income per family of $175,000. That number is actually on the low end, but that's, that's what we were told. These are the folks that will come here to live. So, with that, you've heard a lot of my voice. I can sit down. Our team is here to answer your questions, and we thank you. We, you have been very gracious hosts with us. We hope that you will approve the development and hope that we can continue to do good work in your town. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Just a quick question, perhaps Igor or someone could give us a little information about Interform, about the size of the company, its age, how much, how it's capitalized, whether you're going to build these, and whether you're going to manage them after they're built, to give us an idea of, of the size of the operation involved in this project?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, council members, first of all, thank you for the opportunity for us to spend over $100 million in your community. Speaking about our company, we've been in business over 15 years. I'm personally one of the owners of the company, and personally, I have over 30, almost 30 years' experience in real estate, different commercial, residential, management, construction. Right now, we're running close to 20 projects in Chicago metropolitan. One of our biggest projects right now in Oak Brook, Oak Brook Terrace, we're under construction of 314 units. We should be operational May, June of this year, and with the final delivery of the last units by the end of, of this year. Our specialty is residential. We have our own management company, our own maintenance company, so we've done at some point over 1,000, 1,000 units of residential under our management, belonging to our company. Most of the stuff which we built up till, until today, it's done in-house, so we have our own construction company. So, we're doing right now 60 townhomes in Orland Park. We're doing 30, 29 townhomes in River Forest, a project of 30 units in Lakeview, Chicago, 52 units in Lincoln Park. We just finished one project in Park Ridge, 23 townhomes. We built and right now rented out close to 90% occupancy. Another building in Glenview, 36 units. So, it's, I, I don't want to mention smaller projects, and probably I'm still missing some of the big projects which we have. I'm not bragging. I'm just, again, pretty much answering your question. So, we are hands-on. We're not just developers. We're builders ourselves, but for this size of the project, we hire a bigger company. For example, Oak Brook Terrace is right now under construction by McShane. And we're working with McShane and other same, similar size of the companies discussing Warrenville project. It's not signed yet because to do anything, we need final approval. That's why we're here. Again, we are geared to middle to higher-end product. So, and, and again, it's been mentioned that this is Class A property, which will require it higher-end finishes and amenities. John already mentioned that it's, it's high amenity building. The reason why we're doing that, because we're creating different lifestyle for people so that they don't have to join Health Club. They can do everything in-house. So, it's going to, it's going to be a huge pool with the business center, with the Health Club, pretty much everything, including even, we are working on an idea about, they can, they, center for the kids in a property so that people will have convenience just dropping their kids off before going to work and coming back home and getting kids right there. So, we're very excited about this project. We've been working on it with your staff for almost over the year. And, and again, the reason for such a long time, because we had to, you know, check everything. So, we don't have anything granted, so we, we, we know that the project will succeed. And we have a marketing company which did very thorough research for us. We've been talking to different brokerage community, residential, commercial, so we have confidence that the project will succeed. As far as financials, we've been approved for financing with the private bank, and that's not private, it's really private bank, CIBC right now. So, and we have commitments for, for equity and for mezzanine, if anybody know the stack of financial for this size of the property. So, again, our construction, just for the apartment building, including land, it's close to $80 million. And with the, with the townhomes and commercial, we're looking way north of $100 million.
So, if I understand, your business model is you, you provide the, the money, you develop this property, and then you continue to manage it going into the future. You don't sell it off?
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. Yes, our goal is for sister property and this property, and actually, we've been working on two more projects, similar size and quality. And the, our goal is, yes, to finish, stabilize, and manage. So, it's not for sale product, except townhomes. Everything will be managed in whole by our company.
Great. Before we go back to the citizens comments, any comments or questions from the council for Igor, or if you've got him up here? Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I was interested in hearing a little bit more about the commercial aspect of the development, which is going to come last and seems somewhat vague in the proposals. Are there any more specifics that you can give us? I know that some of the, the variances, just a couple, that we're granting relate to the spacing of the buildings, and I'm, I'm wondering, you know, how, how definite that is? If we grant approval for reduced spacing of the buildings, for example, but then these things are never built, or someone comes up with some possible commercial tenant someday that wants something very specific to be built there, we're just going to have to change it then. So, why grant variances now?
Sure, I'm glad you ask. Again, the, the, the commercial was sticking point right from the beginning, and we've heard the city is looking for, you know, grocery store. It was mentioned Mariano's or something like that. And again, without doing, digging into research right away, you know, that was a great idea for us because, again, our, our model for this community is not just residential. This site needs, needs retailer, which will accommodate residential and vice versa. Just commercial on this site wouldn't survive without rooftops. So, we went to Vegas, not to play, but it was a huge show of shopping centers, and we engaged a few big companies which specialize in PUD kind of projects, and we've heard a lot of positive response. And actually, we've been talking to few potential tenants, but, you know, it's like in everything else, what's first, eggs or chicken? And commercial folks, they're saying, well, show us approval. We want to put in our data, how many rooftops you're going to have? What is going to be, what kind of support we're going to have just from this community? Yes, they understand office buildings, and they understand this is not seven days operations. It's most likely day traffic. It's for the restaurants, it's breakfast, lunch, and, and again, convenience. So, we have lined up a number of commercial possible tenants for the commercial, but once again, they're saying, they can sign up with us as soon as, you know, they'll know what it, what it's coming in line, but again, they are not going to be the first one to open their doors. They want to see apartment, apartment building running and operating, hopefully, and, and the townhomes in development stage. And again, our model is, we cannot survive without commercial. Our financial model required to have commercial there. But again, we're not suicidal to build, to build it first, just looking for somebody. So, we're going to have a tenant, and we're going to do those commercial spaces tailored to them. That's why we have two spaces which can accommodate drive-through, and again, we already have been in talks with a couple folks which kind of know where they want to be. But again, we have better conversation when it will be approved.
Anyone else? All right, let's, thank you, Igor. Let's go to citizen, citizens comments. We have two other folks that have signed up. Roger Sirsted, did I get that right, Roger? Would you like to come up?
Mayor, everybody, thank you very much. First of all, thank you to the developers for an excellent presentation.
Roger, could you give your address, please?
Oh, yes, I am sorry. 32504 Fowler Circle, that's in Cantera Village. And what I'd like to say is that, first off, the population density of this complex is about four times of what Cantera is. Cantera Village Town Homes. And personally, I think that's just way too much growth in that small amount, in a relatively small amount of space. That's my personal opinion. That's been echoed by number of my, by neighbors throughout the various meetings with the planning commission. However, also, there's the parking concerns. There is some thought that there's gonna be spillover. One of the things I'd like to hear addressed is during the construction time, what they're gonna do with the traffic. They talk about building out Torch Parkway right away. Are we gonna have dump trucks going up and down Torch Parkway? You know, eight hours a day for four years, or whatever the development cycle is? Can we make sure that they, their primary path is going out towards Ferry Road? That would greatly make our lives simpler if the project does move forward. Now, the project itself, one of the things I was thinking about for quite some time is that there's a couple of issues that I have with the design itself. One of the problems that I see with it is that you have the water areas, the ponds, on the interior of the project. And that's gonna attract wildlife. And I don't know if you've ever been on Klein Circle, which is the road along the backyard, the back pond of Cantera. But those sidewalks, shall we say, get well decorated by the local geese? And by having the ponds on the interior of the complex, you're gonna attract a lot of wildlife. Now, for someone who grew up in rural Wisconsin, to me, that's kinda cool. But I hear my neighbors, they kinda freak out when they see a rabbit, okay? So if you want city people in there, you're gonna have more of a city atmosphere. One of the idea, when you, when I, I came up with an idea a couple weeks ago of moving the ponds to the exterior of the complex. And what this does is it brings, you flip the townhomes around and make them share the roadway, widen the roadway around the center building, the apartment building. And they share a much wider roadway. That really opens up the interior space. It gives more, gives better access to emergency vehicles to the apartment building. But by moving the water to the outside, to the exterior of the complex, you also give your residents of the townhomes an unobstructed view of a rather natural setting. And an actual, an actual better quality natural setting. You'd mentioned in your statistics that you have, what is it? 64% of green space? But keep in mind, that's green space that is completely chopped up and divided among basically parking islands. So it's really kind of a low-quality green space that they're talking about. If they were to flip it around, actually, I did a little Photoshop on my, on a computer a couple weeks ago. I just haven't had a chance to present it to anything. And it would actually give a much higher quality green space. And it would actually give your residents more of a city feel, which is what you're trying to give them. And it'll bring the townhomes closer to the, to those commercial structures that you have at the front of Ferry Road. Also, by moving the townhomes to the interior of the project, they can also share, I'm assuming your parking lot's gonna have some type of video surveillance. They would also share that security system. And it could also block off Torch Parkway in its entirety. And therefore, you could have, you could actually have the entire, you could actually turn this entire complex into a gated community if you wanted to with reworking of some of the roadways. It's, I, I understand this is probably gonna go forward. But if we could go forward with a plan that kind of gives, gives more of the land back to the open space that's currently there? That's one thing I really like about Cantera. I've been, I was an original, I'm an original owner at Cantera. I've been there for 26 years, or since 97. And, and that's one of the things I've always liked about that space is that I have easy access to the freeway. But if I walk back to that southwest corner, I'm like in the middle of nowhere. And this is going to change that. And I'm gonna have to deal with that. But if we could change the layout of the complex, you would be able to pretty much build all the stuff you currently are asking for. But yet, you'd still be able to actually have a much higher quality presence along the, along the walkways and pathways that you plan on constructing. That's, if you would like to discuss this further, I actually have a little cheesy little Photoshop on my phone that I did. And if you wanna look at it. But I, I, I think there's a better way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Would someone like to just generally address the construction traffic issue to make sure that that's gonna be properly managed?
Sure, I'd like to address that. But before that, Roger, I didn't catch your last name. So I hope you don't mind me just calling you Roger. I like the way you think. I like that, that's, we have a creative team. And someone who comes up with a novel idea is always welcome. Because there's always some fruit that bears from it. We started, I can't say we started out with something like that. But one of the thing, the first principles moving forward was, let's try to be democratic with the bulk. Meaning how buildings relate to each other and both. So to implement that plan would have meant to create kind of a very tight space for us. I don't wanna say we don't care, because we do. But at the end of the day, these assets that we're talking about here that are going to be approved and hopefully approved and then built, remain here in your community. So we didn't want to leave with this. If you can imagine this, Roger, I'll address you this bulk. And then, we'll let that go. This greens belt around it, I don't think it would have suited Warrenville to have a small Lincoln Park sitting in the middle of things like that. And I hope you don't take that negatively. I, again, it's very creative. So thank you. And I would like to see that, the Photoshop, I'm curious. But addressing the construction traffic, that is a very real concern. Because when, when we get approved and construction folks come in that have secondary and tertiary relationships to us, meaning subcontractors and suppliers that bring in gravel and haul off things, those have a real impact on neighbors. I've lived through phone calls, people saying, John, you did this and now this is happening, both in my town and other towns. So we typically work with staff and say, you folks know your roads. Help us, help us arrange both a path of trucks, but also a sequencing, timing. There are events in town that we don't want to interfere with or have our trucks interfere with. There are issues of timing, hours. Lot of heavy machinery will be on this site. So we wanna be sensitive. So our pledge here tonight is that we will work with staff to minimize those impacts through both traffic routes, timing, and the types of vehicles that come in.
Thank you, John. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Oh, Bob Seabird, how could I forget?
Bob, Bob Seabird, Albright Court. The development will increase the property taxes of the existing taxpayers. You only need to go back to the 1970s, mid-1970s, in the town south of us, Naperville. At this point, the impact fees were being applied by the city of Naperville. First in the state of Illinois. Of course, every builder went to court, went through the court system. And it was determined that, yes, existing taxpayers, property payers are harmed by development and costs. And therefore, there should be some forms of offsetting for this cost. It's a normal economic term. If you charge one selection of the economy, you have to offset the others. So this will be added cost to the individuals in Warrenville. To offset this, we paid $67 million to the developer to obtain the plan that would minimize the impact and costs to the property owners, existing property owners. On this particular plan, when you go solely with Phase 1 that they're going with, eliminating the housing and the commercial, you're gonna generate probably less than $100,000 of property tax revenue to the city. So we'll be able to put about three-quarters of a policeman in half a car out on the road. That's why it will cost the other people money. So certainly, this is not what we, I'm stating now, there's only one person in this room that had the responsibility to vote on the development in Cantera, the financial arrangements with the developer. There's one person in this room. And we took that very seriously for the citizens. Because we didn't want them to lose. This was our one chance for the citizens to gain. There's one document that was sent out about 1992. It states, "Prepared in cooperation with the city of Warrenville." Six pages on the TIF. On the back, you can tell who sent this out. Warrenville Development Limited Partnership, the developer. So here we have a document to every person, mailbox, PO box, in Warrenville. So we would assume if you're a resident, what is being placed in this document by the city is truthful. I think that's a reasonable assumption. So let's see what they said. "Years ago, Warrenville City Council approved special development district zoning for the quarry site to protect it against piecemeal development, which would be detrimental to the community." From 1980 to 1992, Bill Stafford, he came back, John Hewitt, all of the previous individuals went behind us looking for the citizens. And they continue. "Another developer could, of course, pursue the project at a future time should the Cantera project fail to go ahead. A future developer would, however, be obligated to work within the guidelines of a cohesive, integrated, overall plan." It's the one we paid seven, almost $70 million for. That's the one that benefited the taxpayers, the existing taxpayers. So we're sitting in here with a document sent by the developer and the city to the citizens. So we would assume the citizens should accept this. This should be the truth. This should be what they're gonna do. And it continues. "The only alternative," states here, "the only alternative would be for the city council to revoke its special development district zoning and institute some new requirements, which would then require a lengthy planning and hearing process." That didn't occur. The legal notice didn't identify those steps. So do we take the citizens when we promise them a trip to Chicago? Do we drop them off in Old Park and say, this is where you go? I'm having two municipal attorneys reviewing this information. I believe the city should review this and look at the pure objective of what our forefathers and the people who are up in the balcony tonight. They're not here anymore. But if they were here, I would look like Little Bo Peep compared to some of these people. They were the people that built the town, incorporated the town, and had a view for the town and the people who never had that golden horn that they were looking for.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Okay, any additional comments or questions from the council? Yes, Sue.
Sue Fox, I think you probably already got my name. But I just wanted to ask if they could address the issue of snow? When you look at the townhome, the 60-town homes, there's very little space in between the townhomes. And, you know, anybody, I'm sure you guys have all been through Cantera. Even after the snow we had today, our snow's piled up four or five feet. We have a lot more green space. We have 160 units on 30 acres. And they're gonna have 60 units on 5 acres. So how is that gonna be, how is that gonna be handled?
Okay, someone wanna address that? Thank you, Sue.
I wanna bring up the landscape plan. So that was a topic that we discussed both with our traffic engineer but, and also with the landscape engineer. And one of the fundamentals here is Torch Parkway will be a village-owned street. Which means that your public, I don't wanna answer for your Public Works Department. But we actually have worked on it and will work in conjunction with Public Works Department to be able to adequately maintain that road. We believe that there's enough storage We believe that there's enough storage on the, help me out here, northwest side of Torch to be able to more than manage that. There's other pockets within the development, but it's something that we considered, and again, we'd be glad to work with Public Works to be able to manage that.
Right. Thank you, gentlemen. That was very comprehensive. Change your mind? Want to talk? Come on up. Name and address, please.
Anissa Ali, Naperville. I am the town from the south. Couple of different things is, first, when reviewing the municipal code, I went, as most people would assume was the right start, which is going to the special district requirements. What took me aback was the number of variances being requested for this development. Got very confusing and convoluted in it. In conversation, or in email exchange with Natalie, I noted that two years ago, maybe three now, Ryan Holmes also submitted concept drawings to staff that are very similar in design to what's being presented tonight. Ryan Holmes is an all-inclusive company. They do all their work under one umbrella to obtain the same outcome. They backed away from it, and if this passes tonight, I hope it is successful. Being familiar with Ryan Companies, or Ryan Holmes, my apologies, the fact that they sat with staff, which means they did their market research, had three different concepts in front of staff, and took a step away, makes me wonder, is this is the right place for this type of development? And going back to, I'm sorry, this gentleman's comments, as I said, I am from the town from the south. He's absolutely right, in my opinion. What was presented for this area is a contract to the citizens. This is what they expected. This is what they looked for. This is, like me, they went to the special district zoning requirements. When looking at the reports that goes to you from staff, it was stated to, in a memo, that between Ryan Holmes and this development, by what I can gather by timelines and dates of the memos, staff was supposed to look at a special process to update or reevaluate, redesign what can be done with this property. Somewhere between Ryan Holmes and here, that never happened. So going with what the gentleman said, I really believe that taking a closer look and educating the community and saying, "We're updating our promise, and here's the process we're going to go through," should be done before a vote on this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Going once, going twice. I don't see any new faces, so I think we've got everyone. Let's continue with our, thank you, gentlemen. Well done, very comprehensive presentation. It's appreciated. We'll go to official and staff comments, now beginning with the mayor. Just a reminder that annually, I do my State of the City address. That's coming up at the end of February, February 28th would be the date, 8:00 p.m. here, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. 6:00 to 6:30 is our happy hour, just for some light refreshments, so don't get any ideas. And then I make my presentation. We changed it up last year. It was a lot different than I've done in the past. Actually doing a little PowerPoint and a lot of fun stuff, so I think you'll enjoy it. You'll get an idea of what's coming down the pike, what we've already committed to, the changes we've seen in the last year, the changes that we can anticipate seeing coming up. It's always fun. I say that now because I'm done with last year's, but I still have to prepare this year, so I'm assuming it's going to be fun. I think it will. And at least informative. You'll have an idea of, again, what's going on. You'll have a chance to interact with other elected officials and your neighbors. So again, February 28th, 6:00 p.m., right here at City Hall, the State of the City address. Everyone is welcome. That's all I have. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the Police Department for calling me last week as part of their "I, We Live Alone" service that they have for senior citizens. It is a good program. It checks on people who live alone during extreme cold or heat days. And so I have now been added to their list, and I thank them very much.
Thank you, Emily. Treasurer? Nothing this evening. Okay. City Administrator?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and Attorney.
I just wanted to mention that we've issued this month, from the Holland and Knight Alerts Department, we've issued two alerts from our group that I hope you've all received, one relating to the Juvenile Court Act amendments that became effective as of the first of the year, and the other pertaining to the impact of the federal income tax law changes on local government. If you haven't gotten them, let me know. We'll make sure we get you on the list.
Great. Thank you, Barb. Okay. Let's move on to the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener. And welcome, by the way. I'm glad you made it safely.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda for the January 15, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second? Second by Roman Dablos. Alderman Ashauer.
I'd like to remove 6A.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. And the Secretary? Okay. So we have an altered agenda for this evening. Any other changes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved as changed for this evening. We have several sets of minutes that need approval before we can move on to that, so Alderman Widener again.
I move to approve the minutes of the December 18, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting, to approve the minutes of the December 18, 2017 City Council Closed Session, and finally, to approve the minutes of the January 8, 2018 Community Development Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting.
Second? Second by Roman Dablos. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. The consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6B, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2018-01. R2, yeah, correct. Approving a sexual harassment policy, which will be incorporated into the city's employee personnel manual, as mandated by Public Act 100-0554. C, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2018-02. Approving an extension of the GovTemp's USA Agreement for Temporary Human Resources Coordinatory Services for an additional three months at a total contract cost not to exceed $20,000. D, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting, held on November 21, 2017. E, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting, held on December 13, 2017. F, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeal Special Meeting, held on December 14, 2017, and regular meetings held on December 21, 2017, and January 4, 2018. G, receive and file the 2017 Annual Report of the Environmental, for the Environmental Advisory Commission. H, receive and file report of invoices paid up to January 10, 2018, in the amount of And I authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before February 5, 2018, in the amount of $460,187.53. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second? Second by Alderman Dablos. May I per call, please?
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Dablos?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We'll go back to 6A. Would someone like to bring that forward, please? I'm presuming you're going to vote against it?
Yeah.
Okay. So could we have someone that is not going to vote against it bring it forward? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading, and pass an ordinance O2018/01, or dash 01. Approving a revised preliminary planned unit development plan and a preliminary plat of subdivision, land use redesignation, site-specific amendments to the Cantera Development Control Regulations, and general site plan documents, and a variation from subdivision control ordinance for Review West 28301 Ferry Road.
Second? Second by Alderman Dablos. I would like to ask the Community Development Director to give the staff perspective on this particular development before we have discussion by the council. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of staff, I do truly appreciate the opportunity to share with you staff's perspective on this particular project and explain the staff recommendation that the preliminary PUD requests for this project be approved. We've been meeting with different stakeholders on this project for well over six months now, and one of the reoccurring questions that has been raised by the various individuals that have questions or concerns or are interested in this project is why? Why this project? Why now? And why at this location? And as we have evaluated and worked with the developer and the various stakeholders over the last six months to a year, staff has really looked at this project from three different perspectives. First, we've looked at it from the perspective of the Cantera Village Townhouse subdivision. The last thing staff wants to do, or for that matter, I'm sure the city wants to do, is create a project that would have a negative impact on that subdivision. That subdivision is a very nice subdivision. It's well-maintained. It's a great addition to the Cantera project and to the city. But what I can tell you, as we've thoroughly evaluated this project and worked with the developer to make changes in the project, it's our firm belief that the project as it's currently construed, if we were in the shoes of a Cantera resident, Cantera Village resident, would be a much more desirable, appropriate, and effective transition to their neighborhood than what was either previously approved by the city on this particular site or what's allowed essentially by right under the Cantera Development Control Regulations. Back just prior to the city's approval of the final plans for the Cantera Village Townhouse subdivision, the city approved a preliminary PUD plan for the property that's covered or encompassed by the proposed Riverview West project that's before you tonight. A fairly intense alt-office development was approved, in total, both on those approved plans from back then and what's allowed under the Cantera Development Control Regulations, up to 950,000 square feet of additional office space in buildings that would be as high as 175 feet, and approximately 4,000 additional parking spaces, both in surface parking lots and in multiple-story parking garages, were allowed or tentatively preliminary-approved on that particular piece of property. Now let's step back and compare it to what's being proposed in the Riverview West project, primarily a residential project. The project includes the construction, or proposes the construction of about 670,000 square feet of building area, about a 30% reduction from what was previously approved by the city for this particular property. In addition, the total number of new parking spaces that are being proposed under the current project is just over 1,100 square feet, or 1,100 spaces. About 500 of those spaces would be located within the garages of the individual townhouse units and the garage structure for the apartment building. So overall, a significant and dramatic reduction in the overall amount of asphalt that would be located in impervious area on this project. A couple of the reasons that have brought us to the conclusion that this project would be a more appropriate transition really do kind of build off of the significant reduction in scale, density, and height with the current proposal. Overall, the project would have about 67% of its site allocated towards open space elements. In contrast, the previous approved project, preliminary-approved project, had about 47% of its site area allocated to open space. And in comparison to the Cantera Village project, that project has 57% of its site allocated to open space. So this project would have more open space than what was previously approved by the city on this property, and on a percentage basis, more open space than what's provided in the Cantera Village Townhouse. And just one last point on open space is that under the Cantera Development Control Regulations, this property could be developed as either office or commercial, some other type of commercial use. If it was developed as a commercial use, the minimum amount of landscape coverage that the Development Control Regulations would require is 20% of the open, 20% of the total lot area. If it was developed to the minimum standards in the office park use area designation that it currently has, it would only need to have 35% of the site area allocated towards open space. So in this case, there's less impervious area and much more green space, open space, than what was previously approved or required. Another benefit from, again, from the neighboring subdivision perspective, in the reduction intensity of development on this project, is the coinciding reduction in traffic that would be generated. As part of the requirements for this project, the developer was required to do a very detailed and thorough traffic analysis for the project. That traffic analysis was reviewed and approved by the city's traffic engineer. That analysis showed that the peak hour traffic from this project would be about half of what the peak hour traffic would have been had the previously approved office development gone forward. Another benefit of this project is the residential orientation and relationship to Torch Parkway. Since the beginning of Cantera, it was always envisioned that Torch Parkway would be extended from where it currently stops at Klein Circle, all the way down to Ferry Road to the existing signalized intersection just east of the DuPage River. Under the previous commercial office plan, it was envisioned that that roadway extension would be a relatively straight shot, 37-foot-wide, commercial collector street. With this plan, we've worked closely with the developer, given the concerns of the neighborhood, to reconfigure that extension at Torch Parkway and make it such that it would be less inviting and really not all that desirable for a cut-through traffic standpoint. And the scale of that road as it's currently proposed is much more residential in feel because it provides access directly to those townhouses, and that's the primary function of it. It would be a 25, or 28-foot-wide street, which complies with the city's standards, and it would allow for parking, parallel parking on the outside edge of the street. So if there would be cars parked on the parallel parking spaces along the outside edge of the street, that means that the remaining street would be about 21 feet wide for traffic circulation, which is more than sufficient. Again, it complies with the city's regulations, the fire district expectations, but it would be much more residential in character. We think that's a very positive thing from the neighborhood to the nurse perspective. Let's take a step back and look at it from the perspective of Cantera. Why does this project look, would be appropriate from the perspective, or why does staff believe it would be appropriate and desirable from the perspective of Cantera? At this point in time, there's about 40 to 50 acres of undeveloped, office-zoned property in Cantera. In addition, there's an ongoing 20% to 22% vacancy in the office space that exists in Cantera, and that vacancy rate has been stuck at that point for the last five years. I've only gone back to verify with the vacancy rates, but I would guess if we went back further than five years, we're in the middle of the recession, and it would probably continue at 20% to 22% vacancy rate. That's pretty significant. On a regular basis, staff interacts with developers, real estate brokers, businesses that are either in Cantera or looking at the possibility of locating in Cantera. And I can tell you, we consistently, whenever we have the opportunity, we talk about what's on the table, what things that we think would be positive for Cantera are on the horizon might be happening. And we've made a conscious effort over the last year to talk with the brokers that represent the vacant property in Cantera, the brokers that represent the vacant office space in Cantera, and the retail and restaurant business owners in Cantera about this particular project and this particular site. And I can tell you, across the board, they would all be happy and excited And I can tell you, across the board, they would all be happy and excited if this project went forward. The last thing that the real estate brokerage community or the office development community wants to see happen is the city to force more office in Cantera when there's already a glut of office space. I would suggest if anybody has any questions or concerns about the future of office, suburban office parks, you just Google it. It's, what comes up when you Google it isn't a pretty picture, and I think we're experiencing that in Cantera and generally in the suburban market. And what you've seen happen throughout the country and including in the suburban areas of, of the Chicago metropolitan market is a re-evaluation of what can be done to reinvigorate, revitalize these, you know, office parks so that they can be successful and continue to be economic engines going forward. And one of the things, one of the approaches and strategies that the, the development community and other municipalities are doing is to further, further introduce additional land uses and further diversify the land uses in office park projects, giving them a more kind of a 24-hour activity level. And one of the ways they're doing that successfully is by introducing new, high-quality residential components that are specifically designed and geared towards the ever-growing residential market segment that is not interested at this point in their life in having a detached single-family home. That's exactly what this project does, and I can tell you that the, the commercial businesses and the restaurants in Cantera would love to see 850 new residents in close proximity to their businesses. The fact of the matter is, is that if this project went forward, it would be a, there would be a significant amount of new construction of high-quality, high caliber, and it would have a very posi, very positive impact on the image of Cantera in the real estate market in the western suburbs. That's based on what I've heard from the real estate brokers that are active in Cantera and around Cantera. Another benefit from my perspective, and John talked about it during his presentation for Cantera, is that there is a very conscious and deliberate design for the trail and pedestrian network throughout the Cantera project. In one of the areas, this area in particular, is the one area where there's the missing link. It's a large area of the project, and there are some very important pedestrian and trail connections that are envisioned in the Cantera General Site Plan documents that the city approved back in the, the early and mid-'90s that have not been made because this property remains vacant. As part of the current proposal, the development, if it's approved and it's implemented, would construct more than 1.8 miles of sidewalk and multi-use trails, including three new public trail connections between the sidewalk system along Torch Parkway and the adjacent west branch of the DuPage River Regional Trail. Finally, why does this project, why is this project desirable from the, the overall city's perspective? I think we could all agree that Cantera is a huge economic engine for the, the city of Warrenville. In fact, in talking to the finance director about that, we estimate that at least half of the city's tax revenues are somewhat directly related to the properties or the businesses in Cantera. It seems to me that it makes sense to, to, to pause and evaluate what the city can do after 25 years of Cantera to make sure that Cantera going forward remains economically strong and viable. And it's our staff position that introducing this type of project into this area of Cantera would do just that. The housing would not only strengthen the, the, the Cantera development, make it more attractive to businesses that would be looking to attract employees or occupy space in the project, but the residents would generate tax revenues for the city, both through the payment of property taxes, the support of existing businesses both in Cantera and outside the community, and those additional residential population would help make the city more attractive for additional desirable commercial development throughout the, the community. Finally, last but not least, from the city's perspective, the city council adopted an economic development plan back in 2015, and one of the core tenets of that economic development plan was to further explore and look for opportunities to expand the, the, the housing stock, the type and quality of housing stock in the community, diversify that, and really look for opportunities to introduce additional multifamily and even apartment rental projects. And I think this is a, an excellent opportunity to do just that. The fact of the matter is, is that this project is not going to compete with any other project in the city of Warrenville. The price point, the type of housing that's being proposed here is different than anything that we have in the city of Warrenville. And if there are residents, future residents that occupy these type of housing, and they get to a point in their life when they want to have kids or they want to move to a single-family home, and they like Warrenville and what Warrenville represents and has provided to them, most likely they're going to look in Warrenville to buy a house, which is good for the rest of the housing stock in our community. So with that in conclusion, staff strongly supports this project. We feel it's a very creative, creative and appropriate design approach to this, to this, for this particular property. It's integrated. It's not a piecemeal approach for the Cantera project, and it's wise to look at making a modification to the long-term plan that was set forth in night, in the early '90s for Cantera to allow this type of project to happen.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions from the council for Ron? Alderman Ashauer?
Does, do we have to do anything about the special development district zoning for Cantera?
The, the, under the special development district zoning classification, any development that happens in the special development district must be done as a planned unit development with a approved, a comprehensive, integrated general site plan and a set of development control regulations. So that's what the city approved in the early '90s, was the general site plan documents for the Cantera development that we currently use and the, the, the Cantera Development Control Regulations. And those are the regulatory tools that we use to manage and control the development that has happened and will happen in the Cantera project. Under those regulations, there are clear and defined provisions that allow for developers or property owners, for that matter, to ask for special relief and ask for amendments to the Cantera Development Control Regulations, and that's exactly what has happened in this case. There was a public notice published that acknowledged the fact that the developer in this case is asking for an amendment to the general site plan documents and the Cantera Development Control Regulations to allow this type of land use to occur on this particular property when it was not envisioned back in the early '90s. This type of project was not being built in the suburban, this type of project was not being built virtually anywhere in the '90s, so it wasn't something that anybody was envisioning. So it is something that the developer, in my opinion, has filed the proper applications. We've published the proper public notices, and I feel confident that we're on solid ground to allow this project to go forward with any, without any additional public notice or public hearings.
Is, are the traffic numbers that you quoted based on full build-out of the earlier proposed businesses?
That's correct.
Okay. And has anything developed to that level in Cantera since it began?
No.
So those are a little bit presumptuous.
That's correct.
I just want to make that clear. And, and, and it doesn't matter to my concerns. But sometimes things are a little misrepresented because it's unlikely that that would have ever built out to the maximum that you were suggesting. So...
At one time, Amaco did have intentions to build it out that, to that density, but for whatever reason, they, they were, or it was BP, and they were absorbed by Amaco, and that changed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor, oh, Alderman Diavlos.
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of quick things before we vote. Thank you, Community Development Director, answer for that explanation. I, I always learn something when facts like that get out. I was able to attend all the planning commission meetings, all the public hearings, the public information meeting, and they were all exceptionally helpful. And I started in with this development uncertain about it, same reason many of the residents were uncertain. I was worried about stormwater. I was worried about parking. I was worried about traffic and density, were the fourth things that I was circulating around. But going to those, and I didn't ever say anything in those meetings, I think the appropriate time to be speaking is, is here at council for people that are council members. But I, I did learn a lot about this. I learned, I got my questions answered. I do not have concerns in that area at this point. The density issue was, was very large for me and the amount of variances. And I, I think Cantera in the 1990s was, as we've all talked about tonight, was going to be sort of a business and commercial development, but that's almost 30 years ago, and after 2008, everything changed. And I think this is a new idea that's, actually, I'm very positive about it for this site because things have changed and they just aren't what they were in the old days. And the variances have had to happen for all the residential areas. The, the apartments, the Cantera Village, all of those, I, I wasn't on council for all of that, but I was around for all of that and listening to council meetings during that time, and everything needed variances if you were residential. So every, you guys are living in places that required variances for those developments to be approved, and there was controversy. There was loud controversy, and I happen to like it when the residents come. And, and I applaud the people that are here tonight and have been there through all the public hearings because this is how we get to good conclusions, and everybody doesn't exactly get everything they want, but every single person who showed up and talked, I want to say thank you because I listened and it made me think about new things. As I read over our packet tonight, it was summarized what some of the changes were by staff, but also changes were made because people stood up at the public hearing and had concerns, and changes were made. And I think that's just a good, good process, and I'm always glad to be part of that. I, I think also, a couple of things. This tax issue, I think our property taxes are only about 25, 20%, something like that of our budget. So people tend to forget the extraordinary amount of money that comes into our city from all the other taxes, shared income taxes, gas taxes, amusement, food and beverage, you know, utility taxes. If you look at our budget, it's, we are so diverse in our income, which is one of the reasons we do so well, besides Cantera. And so the property taxes are not, the increase in property taxes are important, but they're not going to carry the show. And so this will be an engine, and I, and I think somebody mentioned something about density at one of the plan commission meetings, that our target, for instance, is during the day, it's the highest-visited target in the whole Chicago area. In the evenings, in the weekends, not so much. They are really down. So to put a hi, higher-density residential in there is not only going to help a store as big as Target, it will help a lot of other businesses down there. And businesses are, are failing all over, and as was discussed tonight, these office buildings are emptied, and we're just in a new world where we have to open up to new things. And some of the articles that have been given to me on the density issue and how municipalities are using higher-dense areas have to be very well-planned and in the right place are turning out to be revitalizing neighborhoods, and Cantera is a neighborhood, I guess, is what I'm saying. And so the variances don't bother me. I, I think this whole process, and I'll end here, this whole process for me has been an extraordinary learning experience on municipal development and how we can work together, and I thank staff for being so clear and concise. I think the developer has come back over and over and over again to answer questions and been open to those questions, so I am very positive about this. It's exciting that it's sort of new. I know, I have 30-year-old children, and they would love to live in these apartments where they have parking that is inside, they have athletic places. This is exactly what that part of our population really wants now. So just want to say thank you to everybody that's been part of it.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, quite frankly, I see the need for housing. I don't particularly think that site is the perfect site for housing. I haven't heard from anybody in Cantera Village that's really ecstatic about it. I do think it is going to adversely affect our own property taxes. As Kathy said, it is a very small part of our budget, but when people come into Warrenville looking to develop, I'm sure before they start buying anything, they start crunching the numbers. And you start looking at Naperville's tax rate is 6.7696. Warrenville's tax rate is 8.2548. I, I really can't, I, I really can't vote for anything that is going to take, have any chance at all of increasing that rate because the more we increase that rate, the less chance we have of attracting commercial development, which is going to help reduce taxes in Warrenville. We only have so much commercial development available. To be changing commercial property to residential property, I, I just, I just can't believe that's some good for the community. There's a lot of other places in Warrenville that we can put on commercial, residential developments and things like that. At the least, I would say that if, if we're going to reduce a 33-acre space that's commercial, we should find another area in Warrenville on a main road like 59 and designate that for commercial. That would be at the very least. I don't, I don't personally think that's, I think this needs more thinking over than what we've had. It, it just seems like it's just getting pushed through too quick. Matter of fact, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this, bring this up at a later date, table it, whatever, until we know about the, as far as a special service area or a special, special development district. I don't, I don't see where this has to be done in just a few weeks here. I think more people should weigh in on it. We should just be a little bit more cautious. I'd like to make a motion that we table this for whatever time is acceptable to the rest of the council, being at least two weeks or better.
Any second? Well, we're voting on the motion to table. That takes precedence. I see no second. We're back to the initial motion. Any other comments? Alderman Ashauer?
The, I've been involved with this kind of from the beginning. It came to the Economic Development Committee first, and I had some concerns about density. It's a huge diversion from anything that we have in town. It's a very urban development. It requires, it's very dense. A lot of people in a very small area. We're a community that doesn't have public transportation. Currently, there's not convenient access to retail for that development, so everything's going to be done by car. Very low is going to be done on foot or bicycle. The, the, I really don't have a great deal of problem with the concept. My problem is with the density, the parking, the amount of townhouses, the, it is probably most, it obviously is the most congested plan that we've had proposed. The, just a side note, if you look at your Google sheet that you had before and you look at the building footprints around it, this has more probably lot coverage of building than any, any place close to it. But the, the, anyway, the, the, the big... But the, anyway, the, the big deal to me is we've got X amount of apartments, and we've got X amount of parking, and we've been assured that the new rules, people don't need cars anymore as many as they used to. I just disagree with that. We have rules that we've had in place that have worked. We've made mistakes here before, and if we make those changes now, and they don't work, we've got no comeback. What we've got is an over-congested place with no place to park. The business component that should be protected and actually enhanced, in my opinion, has shared parking that is considered part of the apartment parking. Those are big issues to me, and I don't, I listen to the, they all kind of relate to a lot of the things that the people from the neighborhood were complaining about. If you have adequate parking and circulation, then you don't have the amount of congestion that is being created under this level, in my opinion. I spoke with the Community Development Director about it, and, you know, it's a simple formula. You guys are here to come and make a profit, build a product, move on with your business. Our Community Development Director does a great job of entertaining these possibilities and seeing the best way that they might work. And my job as an alderman is somewhere in between that, to make sure that the people in town are protected, and that we get something that's a long-term benefit from the perspective of the comments, the neighborhood, and the world that we live in. And that's why I have a problem with this development and won't vote for it as it is. It wouldn't take a great deal of changes from my perspective to make it fit, but it's just too much and too little.
Alderman Goodman?
I have a couple of questions for Ron. I was looking at the paperwork that was provided in our packet, not just the whole overview, but just the small bit that we got in our packet. And on page eight, it says, "Conditions relating to the townhomes, Lot 2." I'm pretty sure that's supposed to be Lot 3, because otherwise there aren't any conditions about Lot 3. The following page has conditions about Lot 2 and Lot 1. But it begins by talking about, "Every other townhome building shall contain four or less units," which is confusingly phrased. I was looking at the site plan, and it doesn't look like every other one has four. It looks like there's four in a row with six, and then one with four, and then two with six, and so on. And I guess my general comment about that is that I appreciate staff's decision to save paper, but missing the site plan in our packet this time made it very hard to review this ordinance. Please always include at least an overview of the visuals with a project, even if I have to go online or to the office to get details and to have all the more complex and interesting, like the landscape plan, visuals involved, and that would ease my review, if that's all right. I've been sitting here thinking over something that John said earlier tonight, and I'd just like to say that people in townhomes do throw parties. I live in a wonderful townhouse here in Warrenville, in Maple Hill, and I'll have to invite all of you to one of my parties some of these days. In my neighborhood, group gatherings are very common, although they tend to take place in the clubhouse, which is used for neighborhood and private events. So my experience living in a townhome is that having the two-car garage and the two spaces in our driveway, there's also islands in the middle that have additional parking. And I'm not sure if it's exactly five or six per house, but it's something like that. It's north of four. And that always has seemed like adequate parking. There is plenty of space for parking, and trust me, people in my neighborhood have parties. People are parked up and down the road outside of that clubhouse where the pool is, and they're having their group events. And over the holidays, there were all these people clearly having holiday parties, as you could drive around and see the gatherings, and there were plenty of parking spaces. I have less experience living in an apartment building in Warrenville, I haven't done that, so I really can't speak to whether the parking in this project is adequate. But we do have parking consultants that we've relied upon in this project, who have provided their expert opinion about how many parking spaces are going to be required. And I default to deferring to expert opinions when I don't have personal experience myself to rely on. So what is really happening here with this project that's creating a lot of pushback? And I think what it is a little bit is that there haven't been any apartments built in the Chicagoland suburbs since about 2006. Not very many to speak of, and certainly not in Warrenville. But I was reading an article in the business section this week about the boom that is going on with apartment building in the suburbs, and I think that's starting today. And certainly, that's starting today here in Warrenville. And hopefully, we're getting in early. The per-square-foot price for rental of apartments in the city is sky-high right now relative to rental in the suburbs. And I think eventually, people are going to realize that that's just unsustainable, and that they can take a train, or that they can commute into the city. My husband has a very long commute every day. He drives a really long way. And, you know, we want to stay living here in Warrenville. So, you know, we're not going to pick up and move to Northbrook so he can have a shorter commute, because our town has what we want. Our town has the community that we want to belong to. Our town has amenities and wonderful nature and other assets that make living here our priority. And we hope that the people who move into these townhomes and these apartment buildings will feel the same way about Warrenville, and that they're going to want to stay. And even if that does mean driving a little bit, driving into the city even, I certainly know people who make that commute. And I know it's not right next to a train station, so when you hear people say, "Well, we don't have enough public transportation in Warrenville," I agree with that. I would love to have more public transportation in Warrenville. That's not the current situation, and that's mostly out of our control. You know, if the city council here could make decisions about putting train lines into Warrenville, you know, we would make those decisions, but that's not something we can control. So what can we control? We can control the quality of the development. And from everything that I've seen and looked through, the architectural renderings, this for residential development seems to be very high-quality. And I know that a lot of thought has gone into it from the staff level, who've talked to me about how they've worked with you on this project for a year. And I really respect our staff, and I know they have a high attention to detail, and I appreciate that on behalf of our residents. So I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, let me just say one last thing that I thought about, and that's to the residents of Cantera Village. I talked about this the last council meeting, when this was, when this was brought up, or Community Development, I'm sorry, that this was unanimously, this development was unanimously passed, unanimously passed by the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals with, I can't remember the word.
Scrambling or error, I would think?
Not reservation.
Conditions.
Conditions, that's right. And I asked about that at the time, and as I'm reading, as I'm reading the notes tonight, there is something in one of the Plan Commission meetings about when final engineering occurs, perhaps, and I can't remember the numbers, two of the townhouses might disappear. And that would, because of some engineering or something, we find out things as we go forward, and we're responsive to that. So I want to let you folks know that that's still occurring. It's, nothing is, it's said, and some things are said in stone, but when problems arise, the city will have requirements, and there will be things that may need to be changed. The second and last thing I want to say is, this city, in the 30-some years I've lived here, is very, very responsive to concerns and problems that come up in residential areas. And I'm not going to sit here and list them. I'll just say one right now, is that we're working with people in Summer Lakes on flooding. We've changed parking on certain roads because of issues that have come up. So I will, I would like to say guarantee, but I will say guarantee that if something happens and your streets are flooded with cars, and you have no parking spaces, and everybody's fishing in your pond, and there's no, we're going to, you just come, and we're going to talk about it and bring it up, and we will figure out a solution, because we somehow always do. And so you are, you are so important to us. And you have ranch homes that someday I might want to move into, so I love your area. So we will do whatever it takes if there are unforeseen issues that come about because of the changes that are being made, that you will never be forgotten. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
I got everybody? Did I get everybody? I'm sorry. Alderman Ashauer, I'm sorry.
Aye.
You were the last one. Sorry. Motion carries. Welcome to Warrenville. Okay, we have nothing under regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business. We do have the need, however, for a closed session this evening, so if I could have the citation, please, Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2, Prence C, Prence 1. The appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body, to determine its validity.
Second. Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We will not be conducting any business after our executive session, so thank you for your attention this evening, and we will see you next time.